Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of May the 4th, 2015. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a period of silent meditation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the City Council is as follows: The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearing, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meeting of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for future agenda. This is not an open-mic night. Before we start, Teresa, we're going to have Ms. Ashley Hill, who is with C-SPAN, and she's going to come up and talk about some -- a project that they're doing in Lincoln this week. You write on one of those -- you've got to pick a microphone. I know that's...
Hello, everyone. As you said, my name is Ashley Hill. I'm a producer and community relations representative for C-SPAN out of Washington, D.C., specifically our C-SPAN Cities Tour, which is in Lincoln this week highlighting the city. So just wanted to tell you quickly a little bit about that. We're here actually working with our cable partners at Time Warner Cable. We've had a long partnership with them, and it's because of them that we're able to do what we do at C-SPAN. A lot of people don't know that our political TV network was founded by the cable industry in 1979 with the mission of providing viewers with direct access to their lawmakers. And as we can see on the TVs here, I think that's something we can all get behind. We've since expanded to include C-SPAN 2 and C-SPAN 3. This has our book TV and American history TV programming for 48 hours every weekend. And that brings me to why I'm here in Lincoln. Just as the C-SPAN network strives to make Washington, D.C. accessible to the rest of the country, the C-SPAN Cities Tour, which I am part of, looks to turn a spotlight on unique cities around the country that otherwise may not be highlighted on our national networks. So I'm part of a crew of three people. We embed ourselves in a city for a week at a time, and then we produce programming based on that city's history as well as its local literary scene. So while doing that, we hope to introduce the rest of the country what makes the city so special. You'll see us around Lincoln all this week. We drive around in these huge C-SPAN vans called our local content vehicles. You cannot miss us. And we'll be hitting up some of your local historic sites, as well as places like the library and interviewing authors. So I don't want to spoil all the magic. You are going to have to tune in to find out all about the things we'll be covering. But I will say a couple of things that we're going to be looking at as we're taking a tour of your beautiful State House at the Capitol right here. We're going to be talking about Nebraska statehood at the Thomas Kennard House. We're learning about Nebraska politician William Jennings Bryan at the William Jennings Bryan House. And we're also going to the Nebraska State Archives. We're visiting your local library here to look at their Nebraska Heritage Room of Nebraska Authors. And then interviewing about four more authors who are local right here to Lincoln. I'll have the opportunity to kind of get a sense of the city through an interview with the mayor later this week, as well as a sense of the state through an interview with your Governor Ricketts as well. Every piece we shoot is going to air on what we're calling our Special Lincoln/Nebraska Weekend on our C-SPAN networks. That's June 6th and 7th. If you don't set those DVRs, no worries. It will be housed on our website, cspan.org/citystour. There will be a special Lincoln/Nebraska section of the C-SPAN website housed there, and it will all be archived on our C-SPAN Video Library. In addition to all of our televised pieces, we're lucky that our work with Time Warner Cable has allowed us to do extensive community outreach. One of the things we're most excited about is going into local schools and talking with the journalism and history classes in middle and high school about our C-SPAN Student Cam Student Documentary Competition, in which we encourage students to make short documentary films about public policy and local and national government. Again, thank you for having us here in the city of Lincoln this week. We're really excited to uncover what makes your city so special and then represent that on our C-SPAN networks. Again, that air date is June 6th and 7th airing right here on Time Warner Cable. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much for coming and being part and coming to the city. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Teresa, first item, please.
All right. Our first item would be our consent agenda, items 1 through 9.
Anybody who'd like to speak to these items? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right. If not, we can vote on these items. Items 1 and 2 were introduced by Cook.
So moved.
Second.
By Roy. Discussion. Call or roll?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. Items 3 and 6 through 8 were introduced by Eskridge.
So moved. Seconded by Roy. Discussion. Call or roll?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. Next, under public hearing, liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. Item 10, application of Janelle Sanchez-Vargas doing business as Silletto Lindo for the addition of a catering license to their Class I liquor license at 100 North First Street, Suite 1.
Anybody here who'd like to speak to this item?
I will. They don't know they're supposed to be here.
Oh, they do know. We've called them twice.
You know what? I went up and talked to them. They don't know that they're supposed to be here. They don't know. I went up and talked to them. It's in my neighborhood. So I'll talk for them.
Well, you identify yourself.
I will. Just a minute. I will. I say I've been here before. Here's my pen. I am Terri Pope Gonzalez. Three, four -- oh, I can do my hand. Here, just a minute. Okay.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Yeah, I...
What would you like me to answer?
I don't know that you can.
Why can't I? I'm the neighborhood founder.
But you don't represent the liquor license holder. That's an issue.
Okay.
And so she has to come. It's not a very big deal, but I know that we've called her twice until -- last week she said she forgot. So she does know.
She, right now, is bombarded at her restaurant that she can't come away from.
I...
That's why she called me. She calls me Madrina, godmother.
I get that, but she can't come. She has to have a representative. If she wants to bring a legal representative or somebody like that, that's fine.
They don't have the money for a legal representative. That's why this Lord gets away with this.
Terri, it's not. That's nonsense. All we're asking her to do is just exactly what we ask everybody else to do. Now, she would like to talk to -- if you want to talk with the city attorney, you guys can work something out so that we can get...
Conflict of interest.
Okay, well, we'll find somebody...
So I won't send somebody to Jeff.
We'll find somebody who can talk for her.
Spanish.
I don't personally.
And then find somebody who does. John, do you know Spanish?
Un poquito.
Un poquito, yeah, me too. You know what poquito means? Little, very little. And it's usually talking about somebody's PP. Okay?
Okay. John?
Would it be possible, Terri, for you to get her and she to just come? It doesn't take very long to appear, and we could have her come in part of the meeting.
What she's doing is taking food away from her babies when she's got to stop and come in here. And she doesn't have the money to do that. As a matter of fact, her baby sister's eye almost got put out Saturday. She had to put down $252 to keep that baby's eye to be in. So she doesn't have it. So I understand the rules. And everybody else does too, but they don't have it. She does not have the money to get representation. She does not have the money to hire somebody to come in here.
Okay.
That's why I got the phone call. Madrina, can you go in there?
Okay.
I said, "You know what? I have brothers from out of town. Ugly brothers, okay? I have to leave them now at my house with my husband to come down here."
I can't -- I don't think I get an opportunity to give her a break other than I give everybody else. We have everybody here, and our policy has been very consistent. If you're not here to at least answer the questions, if necessary, then we just hold it off. So we'll hold it off for another week.
For another meeting.
We'll hold absolute -- next week. Next week.
And we'll do that.
If you'd just mentioned, yeah, if you'd mentioned too that we, right at the beginning, you know, we do the liquor so that it helps people so they don't have to wait. So it's just a few seconds.
That could be. Okay, so when whoever was explaining, especially if you're explaining on the phone, and if they understand English, they don't -- English and Spanish doesn't always connect. It doesn't.
Okay? So she maybe -- you know what?
I'm telling you, she said, "I can't get away. Can you go in there?" You guys notice, am I late? Am I smelly? Am I dirty? Do I usually come this dirty and smelly in front of you? No. So, okay, so we're going to do -- we're going to do it off, right?
If she could, we'll hold it over. I'll make that motion.
And I'll make sure she's here next one.
If she could come like at 3 o'clock next week, if she'd be at 3 o'clock, it's the first thing we do on the agenda.
Is it 3 o'clock?
Yes. And so within, you know, right now it's 3:10, so you can see we get to it fairly quickly. And we did have that unusual C-SPAN deal, but...
So we're -- next week is what?
The 11th.
May 11.
The 11th.
Okay. And so when is the City Council meeting?
3 o'clock. We will have somebody here who understands Spanish if that's necessary.
Okay, so if she -- okay, okay.
Would that be helpful, or if you could...
If you will.
It's really not difficult. We just got to get on the right page. But it helps if you come in and tell us that, and don't scream at us, okay?
Well, actually, guys, where I'm stuck living because of this group, listen...
That doesn't have any...
I'm not yelling. You know what? I can't hear, okay?
All right.
Do you need my name written down, or do you know how to spell it?
You still have to write it down.
Are there any questions in the interim, too? If you could let our clerk know or something, just so we can have it planned, so everything goes smoothly for...
And this lady here that thinks I didn't mean to -- I'm not meaning to yell. I can't hear.
Make sure that she's on the top of those. Teresa, please.
Yep.
Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item, since it was on the agenda, you have a right to come forward and speak if you'd like to. Next item, please.
All right. Next would be item 11, application of Kichel Fine Art for -- to expand its Class C liquor license by the addition to the area of a new licensed area described as an approximately 140 feet by 25-foot three-story building, including the rooftop area located at 1208 O Street.
Go ahead. Teresa, is this an S.D.L.? Or does he need to raise his hand and be sworn in?
No, he'll need to take the oath.
Okay.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Welcome. State your name.
Identify yourself, please, and your address.
I'm Buck Kichel, or Frederick Kichel. I'm the owner of Kichel Fine Art.
Okay. Can you give us an address, please?
1208 O Street.
Okay, now tell us, tell us what we're doing here, okay?
We are approving a liquor license. We had an addition built to our building on the fourth floor. We finished out an area which gave us access to a rooftop balcony, which we also have. And we just, we have a liquor license for our first three floors.
Gotcha.
And we wanted to extend it to these top two.
Okay. Questions? Do you want a short commercial for, if you'd like to, for Kichel?
Well, you know, it's a great place for fine -- we're a fine art dealer here in Lincoln. We're, you know, one of the tops in the country. We specialize nationally in early, mid-20th century American art with a real focus on the artists that were active in the middle part of our country. And we also represent many of the top contemporary artists from Nebraska and around the country.
Very good. Thank you very much. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next, I'll call items 12 and 13 together. They're the application of Myers Wine Incorporated doing business as Innovation Campus Conference Center for a Class I liquor license at 2021 Transformation Drive and the related manager application of Kevin Meyer. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you, Ken.
I'm here to answer any questions.
Ms. Meyer, you want to identify yourself and an address, please?
Yes, Meyer. 1244 South Street, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Thank you very much. Do you want to tell us a little bit about your business? You get ad time, too, here.
Well, gosh, thanks. This is our 50th anniversary of being on the corner of 13th and South Street. The business was started by Mitch Tavlin in 1965 when he moved his location from 13th and L to 13th and South Street. I purchased the business in 1978, so I'm on my 38th year on the corner of 13th and South. This application is basically in confirmation with the Nebraska State Liquor Commission to reduce the number of special designated licenses. Therefore, they -- we have already licensed the Wick Alumni Center on campus, and this is a special, not a special license, but a regular Class I license for the Nebraska Innovation Campus.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Questions for Mr. Meyer? Thank you.
Welcome.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Item, please.
All right. Next, I'll call item 14, application of Famous Dave's for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 240 feet by 260 feet at 2750 Pine Lake Road Parking Lot to the east on May 30th, 2015, from 4:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. No oath on S.D.L.s.
I'm Charles Lacorn Jr. I'm with Famous Dave's. My address is 3645 L Street here in Lincoln.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about...
Well, this will be our sixth annual barbecue and blues festival. We use it to bring business down to the south part of town, as well as a fundraiser for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. And we have bands, and we have tents, barbecue, and some beer.
Very good. Questions?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
Next would be application of Blue Blood Brewing Company doing business as Blue Blood Brewing for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 70 feet by 40 feet at 500 West South Street, Suite A, on May 16th, 2015, from noon to 11:59 p.m.
Brian Podwinski with Blue Blood Brewing, 9322 South 28th. This is for the Beard of There Bike Event. Pretty standard for us on this S.D.L.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about the event?
It's a group put on -- I'm trying to remember the actual group name that actually puts it on, but it's actually a cycling event that goes from each brewery in Lincoln, and we happen to be the final stop, so we'll have a band, food truck, things like that.
Very, very good. Any other questions? You are here enough that we may make you an honorary member here at any point. Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next would be the application of Ken's Liquor for a special designated license to cover an area measuring approximately 40 feet by 40 feet and an outdoor area measuring approximately 1,500 feet by 400 feet at 1222 South 27th Street on May 30th from 4:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. Just state your name and address.
Okay, my name's Mike Bezinski. I live at 10,000 Blue Water Bay in Lincoln, Nebraska. I represent Ken's Liquor. I've been in business since 1979, been associated with a couple of other liquor stores through the past 35 years. Besides that, I had a little stint with the post office, and I had a gentleman up there who's my supervisor for a while, so I hope you don't hold this against me and vote this down.
No problem, Mike.
I'm here representing this application on May 30th. It's at the Lincoln Zoo. It's the first time I've ever been at the zoo. It's actually a wedding reception we're doing. It's just to highlight some points of interest if you haven't seen the application. The -- it's by invitation only. You only have one entrance in. It'll all be gated, and security will be performed by the Lincoln Zoo people. We have an extra exit on the north, on the south side, excuse me. That'll be for us, for using our entry for our portable bar, plus it'll be an emergency exit. Other than that, we'll have some of our own security there also. Pretty much other than that, it's pretty much a basic event.
Okay. Any question for Mr. Bezinski? Thank you.
Good to see you again, Doug.
Good to see you, Mike. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next, I'll call items 17 through 23. They are various S.D.L. applications for SMG food and beverage, all to be held at the Pinewood Bowl at 3201 South Cottington on May 30th and June 1st and 2nd from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. June 4th, 5th, 6th, and 7th from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. June 22nd, 23rd, and 24th from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. July 30th, 31st, and August 1st from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. August 8th, 9th, and 10th from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. August 20th, 21st, and 22nd from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. And September 10th, 11th, and 12th from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.
Good afternoon. I'm Tom Lorenz. I'm general manager at Pinnacle Bank Arena, SMG Lincoln. We have multiple S.D.L.s to look at today. The majority of them are for Pinewood Bowl. Six of them are for Pinewood Bowl shows. One is for Celebrate Lincoln, which will happen in the festival space. This is our fourth season of Pinewood Bowl. This has been well-received. This is six of the shows. We still have a couple more yet to announce, but these are the ones that we can confirm and show at this point. The Celebrate Lincoln date will be June 5th and 6th in our festival space. It's been on the streets in Lincoln. We're working with Broadcast House to bring that to Lincoln, and the festival space will provide a lot more infrastructure, some parking, and the ability to expand that a bit throughout that timeframe. The shows themselves, even though the S.D.L.s look at a couple days around it, just to zero in, the shows are June 1st at Pinewood, June 23rd, July 31st, August 9th, August 21st, and September 11th. Can I answer any questions that you would have?
Any questions for Mr. Lorenz? John?
On the Pinnacle Bank, you're doing on June 6th and 7th, and that's also in C-SPAN. It's going to air on Lincoln, so will you have big screens for us to watch ourselves?
That'd be very nice, wouldn't it?
That's a good coincidence, though.
Yeah, yeah. So that'll be, that'll be a cool time. And the Celebrate Lincoln bands are Joe Nichols and Gin Blossoms, and that's a reasonable ticket name, actually, to have outside. We'll have some other uses for the festival space throughout the summer that we'll be back for very soon.
Any other questions? Tom, it's good to see at least the start of a migration over to the festival space. I understand, you know, we talked last year about one of the bands that was right by Pershing.
Skrillex.
And I understand why they don't want to leave, but in terms of logistics for people being able to drive the streets of Lincoln, certainly less likely to get those phone calls that I think most of us got about being able to hear the band at 11 o'clock at night.
Some of us could hear it.
Which is a great -- you know, the festival space is a great area.
Right.
There's some baseball that's going on throughout Celebrate Lincoln, and so, I mean, those things will pack up very nicely. Lots of parking on the arena side, then come across that wonderful Lincoln Bridge. There's just a lot of benefit to it. There's power out there. It's already fenced. I mean, there's just, it's just a great location for what, for all these different festivals.
It's just a matter of making a change from being in the middle to kind of...
It's a little mindset change.
Exactly.
Right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
Mr. Chair, I would first of all like to move, we hold order item 10 to next Monday, the 11th.
Second.
Seconded by Learyn. Discussion. Call or roll?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0.
Just to clarify, that was with public hearing.
Yes.
Yes. And then I would move approval of items 11 through 23.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion. Call or roll?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. Next, then, are public hearing resolutions. Item 24, assessing nuisance abatement costs associated with the cleanup work by the Building and Safety Department on the property generally located at 340 Northwest 19th Street.
Good afternoon. Chris Conley, City Law Department. This property is one that's been a problem for some time. As Councilman Eskridge knows, we've been working on this for a while, and we did get a cleanup done on this last fall, and we just did another cleanup on it here in the beginning of March. But what we're asking for now is to have a lien imposed on the property for the costs that were done last September. And the materials are in your pocket, but it's a little over $2,000. We will be getting confirmation from the court on this last cleanup here in the next couple of weeks. We have another hearing set up at that time, so we'll take it up at that time, and we will then seek a lien for those costs. And then at some point, maybe right after those costs are imposed, we will, we need to recover these costs, so we'll be looking at a foreclosure.
Okay.
Other than that, we ask that the lien be imposed. If anyone has any questions.
Questions? Carl?
Yes, thank you. And thanks, Mr. Connelly, for working on this difficult situation. It's kind of a tragic situation, isn't it, where an individual is not completely competent, doesn't seem like, and just has kind of hoarding mentality, and it just seems to every night need to go out and troll and find things and bring back and fill up the empty spaces.
Right.
And so, long-term, then, what, where does our recent ordinance kind of take us? Where would we expect to see this get resolved?
There's, I mean, the end game, as far as we're concerned, is being able to recover our costs, and we don't have anything that's really in effect for keeping the property in tip-top shape, other than continuing to go in and do whatever we need to do. Now, the current court order allows us to go on for a period of two years. If we need to renew that, we could probably get it renewed for another two or however many years the court wants to allow us to do it. There's another property that we just finished off with where we did get another two years on that. So, right now, that's sort of the current plan, is to get that authority to go on whenever the city deems it appropriate, and that's going to be based on what our building and safety people seeing there, what kind of complaints we're getting from the neighborhood, that sort of thing. And so, there's no set level, no finite number of things that are showing up before we make the decision to go on there. It's somewhat subjective, but that's the only way to try and keep it clean. Beyond that, we need to figure out some ways to recover these costs, because they are getting significant. And if it means a foreclosure, then that's what it'll take. Does that result in a change in ownership of the property? It might.
Yeah.
But, you know, at some point, we need to try and recover these when we can, so.
Okay. No, thank you. Chris, you didn't bring any pictures, did you?
Of this property, no. I did not.
Any other questions? This is the property we talked about earlier that's on the P R T. It is a tragic situation, but this'll, we're back now, even after doing this a couple weeks ago, to the point where we could probably have to go back in and do it again. So, this is not going to end with this person having the ability to keep the property clean. So, we're going to be out of options at some point. It's not good for them, but the situation as it is right now is not good for health, and certainly not good for the neighborhood either. So, it's a bad situation. Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next, I'll call item 25, approving 48 Bowl Inc. doing business as Hollywood Bowl as a Keno satellite site at 920 North 48th Street.
Good afternoon, council members.
Come on, be ready. There you go.
My name is Katrina Mafi. I'm Vice President of Marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at 11248 John Galt Boulevard in Omaha, Nebraska, and I'm here with the owner, Bob, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item, please come forward. Next item, please.
All right. Next, I'll call item 26, approving the renewal of an interlocal agreement between the city and the University of Nebraska-Lincoln Office of Online and Distance Education to provide for online portal and program delivery for online food handler and city alcohol seller training programs.
Judy Halsted, Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. I was before you, April 6th, with an agreement that looked fairly similar. You may say, now, why are you back again? I'm back again because the agreement that you had was for the content and for the development. This is actually for the online portal and allows us to do both the food handler and the server seller classes online. Happy to answer any questions you have. The reason you have it is because it's a two-year agreement.
And we created the monster that kind of needed this to be done, correct?
And we're so grateful.
Exactly. Any questions for Judy? Nope, I think not. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next is item 27, approving a transfer of appropriations in the amount of $10,181.36 from general fund account 01001. discretionary funds of Jonathan Cook to account 409360.6138 Parks and Rec Department C I P Community Action Program.
Good afternoon. Lynn Johnson with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. As the clerk just read, the intent here is to transfer discretionary funds from the, transfer, pardon me, city council discretionary funds to the Parks and Recreation Capital Improvement Program. Just a little bit about the project that is in the Capital Improvement Program. That used to be a program that we used to fund, that was intended to be kind of matching grants to work with neighborhood associations, to help them implement projects that they had been identified. In working with Councilman Cook, he intended that his remaining funds be used for that same kind of purpose, to help promote neighborhood groups working on activities that would benefit parks in their neighborhoods, and so we plan to do it that way. That's why we are proposing to put it in that C I P project. There's still a little bit of funds in there. It's not one that we've actively, or been able to actively fund over a number of years, but it was a good project when we had those funds. And I do want to express appreciation to Councilmember Cook for designating these funds in that manner. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Jonathan, real quickly, you wanted just, can you explain how the discretionary money came about, so that there's?
This actually dates back 10 years or more. At one time, the council budget did include discretionary funds for council members that could be used for research and conferences, and we discontinued that. We had difficult budget years, and so we chose not to fund that in our budget. And while I used some discretionary money for some projects in the past, including swimming pool, I had some that I did not use, and it's been in this line item for some time now. And so, when I called up Lynn and asked him for some advice here as to how this bite, you know, it's a small amount in the terms of a lot of projects that you do, this seemed like a really good fit, because a lot of neighborhood projects just need a small amount to make them happen. And so, that kind of cooperation, I think, to help out neighborhood groups is great. So, I really appreciate Lynn suggesting that, and I think that's a good place for it.
Yeah, we'll make sure they get to good use. I know there's neighborhood associations, as you say, they're always looking for a little bit. They've got the labor, they've got some matching funds, they just need a little bit to help them bring the project to fruition, so.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Just as clarification, that happened before I got here, so I do not have any discretionary money to lien over, so I don't want somebody to say, well, why didn't Doug Emery do it before he got off the council? Well, we didn't get any by the time. I gotta think John and Jonathan were the only two that are still around from the time when we had discretionary money. So, Jonathan, I appreciate that you're doing something good with the money, so thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to discuss this item? Next item, please.
Item 28, change of zone 15011, application of Trump Cone Family Trust for a change from A G Agricultural District to A G R Agricultural Residential District on property generally located at 9400 South 56th Street.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group here today, representing Matt Kleinschmidt of Pride Homes on a project that we won't spend too much time on. Give you a few basic details. This exhibit I'll put up here will help you give a little better frame of reference on the property. This is 46 acres on South 56th Street between Yankee Hill and Rockabye Road that has sat for years and years and years, and I think several of our clients waiting to see what happened to it. And the Trump Cone Family Trust left this with several other assets they had to go to charity, and our client has bought it. And what isn't coming up there is that we are using a, it's surrounded by acreages now, and so we worked extensively with staff, and I want to say thank you to the planning department for working with us on several things, on our ability to take this 46 acres and do acreages now, which are going to be about one acre in size. And I just didn't know where the on button was. Okay, thank you.
Teresa.
And so, engineers. Check everything except the on button.
Exactly, Mike.
Probably need a lawyer.
We'll have 16 acres that are, and we're actually going to be put in this back corner, and we'll build from 56th Street out to it, but that's our density by what we can do by A G R, and so we're reviewing a community sewer system, and so we can go with less than three-acre lots, or generally about an acre in size. So, the neighbors are real happy with that. And then what's hard to see on here is this will be our build-through area when eventually sewer and water gets to this development, which, you know, may not be that far away in terms of city growth timelines. And so, I think the most important thing maybe for you all and for Mr. Feigart over there is that we are building these streets to city standards, concrete, curb and gutter from day one, so they'll look and act and function like a city street. We're also in this area building city-standard sewer mains that'll connect to our now treatment facility, private treatment facility, that'll then allow for an easy tap-on when the city annexes. So, I think we kind of got the best of both worlds, the ability to do something now that works good for the neighbors, and do the design and build-out of it in such a way that it'll be compatible with city standards when that happens. So, we come to you with a unanimous recommendation on the change zone, as well as the community plan, which was final action at Planning Commission.
Carl?
Yes, thanks, Mike. So, you indicated something like 45 or so?
Yeah, so 16 lots here, and the existing home will be the 17th, we can do now, and then shadow platted in here. There's a road that comes up here, Carl, up here, another road that comes up here. That leaves another 46 future urban lots when annexed.
Okay.
Learyn?
Mike, did I read something in Planning Commission notes, too, that the way you've located or clustered those one-acre parcels, that they can also be a little more flexible if in the future people want to subdivide, or can you talk, can you speak to that aspect of build-through design?
Yes. With the A G R zoning, if we keep the average around a lot, we're not, we don't have to do the build-through, and that's what planning staff worked with us, because some of them are a little bit larger. So, these won't have a build-through portion on this one-acre lot that shows out it could be two half-acre lots in the future. Instead, we focused on making them smaller, making them isolated. So, also during build-out of the urban phase, they're not impeded by anything that's going on upstream, and then got the remaining 42 acre, or 46 lots, excuse me, on the remaining acres. And we followed the 40%, 60% rule for the acreage development component versus the urban development component. But, so these would, they would not, the 16 new lots down in the corner would not have a build-through provision on them.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to discuss this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right. Next is item 29, text amendment 15003, amending section 27.63.090 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to provide that the number of members residing in a dwelling for members of a religious order may be increased up to 100% when the dwelling is located within 600 feet from the boundary of a school, church, or early childhood care facility served by the members, and amending table 27.72.010C, exceptions to the minimum lot requirements in the A G and A G R districts in section 2772010C of the Lincoln Municipal Code to allow a dwelling for members of a religious order in the A G district on a lot having a minimum area of five acres.
Thank you. My name is Bill Medina, representing the Catholic Bishop of Lincoln, proposing and asking for these possible text amendments to allow us some more flexibility in housing and finding places for our sisters and our priests to live. Basically, the first piece is in direct relation to a proposal by Christ the King Sisters to live in a convent near St. Peter's School. They currently have received the special permit, but they would like to have more sisters than the current lot size entails. In terms of parking or noise or those types of things, the sisters carpool together and are not known for their wild parties or anything of that sort. So, we're hoping that they'll be very good neighbors and will fulfill the concerns of the city council. The second piece, we're also looking at a property at 5600 South Cottington, in which we also will be housing priests and sisters of the Catholic Church, and we were hoping to purchase that. We can't afford the 20 acres that would be required, and so we are requesting for a text amendment to allow us to put a dwelling for members of a religious order on five acres or more. That particular lot size is seven acres.
Questions? Thank you very much. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right. Next is vacation 15004, vacating approximately 0.34 acres of M Street right-of-way along the south side of M Street from a .15 feet west of the east right-of-way line of 7th Street to the west right-of-way line of 8th Street, and a portion of L Street right-of-way along the north side of L Street from a .15 feet west of the east right-of-way line of 7th Street to the west right-of-way line of 8th Street.
Just give your name and address.
Brian Bowles, 729 Q Street. I think it's the next three items.
Yeah, do we want to call 312?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I sure can. Item 31 is the permanent subsurface underground geothermal and permanent above-ground access easement agreement for the Dairy House project, for an easement to install, operate, inspect, maintain, repair, and replace geothermal wells beneath a portion of the 8th Street and M Street public right-of-ways, and granting the Dairy House an easement to configure, stripe, mark, and use portions of the surface of said right-of-ways for parking and access across the easement areas to perform such work, and approving a maintenance and repair and public access easement agreement with the Dairy House, granting the city a maintenance and repair easement over a portion of vacated M Street and L Street to maintain and repair the abutting non-vacated M and L Street, and granting the city a public access easement to use the sidewalks located on vacated M Street and L Street on Grant Wars property for pedestrian access on property generally located between M and L Street and 7th and 8th Street.
That all three?
That's all three.
Is this?
Yes.
Am I smart enough to work this?
It's very faint.
Turn it over.
Flip it over? There we go.
Well, we have the answer to that question.
We got the on button, flipping it right. They were betting me I couldn't stick to five minutes. Does that mean I get 15 or?
Let's vote.
Tell us this, this request is for our Dairy House LLC. We're moving Imperial Ales and Data Security, our two manufacturing companies from historic to South Haymarket. So, what we're requesting today is to help facilitate that move. The areas in red are the portions along M and L Street that we're requesting the vacation for. The areas in green are for the access easement along this portion of M Street and 8th Street, and I don't know if you can see, but there's a thin blue line that's the underground, like maybe analogous with the utility easement, under 8th Street here. Part of our business model, we, all of our locations are geothermal, and so this vacated area and the blue area up here will, and this area here will allow us to add more geothermal wells so that we can address all of the square footage on the block here. When we, for our operations to work, we try and optimize the building energy with the process energy. By doing both together, we get a pretty considerable savings, and so it's, two more small manufacturing companies, especially with the brewery where you're trying to compete with St. Louis, it gives us at least some hedge in there. The areas also give us, let me switch drawings here. There is also provide us with the access and material handling that we need for the block. There's, we have overhead doors, material silos on these three sides that, so when we have trucks parked to load, unload, or moving materials around the block, we won't have to be out in the street like we're currently doing. So, we're hoping that from an access point of view, this will be a net gain for the neighborhood, where with the arena in, where our current operations, sometimes we can run into, create a little extra congestion over here. We'll be able to plan a little bit better where we won't have the congestion, and we can add the circulation. So, then the.
Mr. Bowles, before you move that, at the top of our screen, it has sort of a lime green on the, is that like greenery, or what's that represent?
The South Haymarket study plan wants to make 8th Street a Parkway Street, which we're extremely supportive of, and so this would be the screening so that we'd be consistent with that vision down the block as it evolves, maybe evolving quicker than what some of us thought.
So, there's going to be like shrubbery or something there around? I see it's on both sides of the street, and I'm just.
The light green.
The lime, the lighter green.
Correct.
So, it's just going to be shrubbery or grass or something.
Right, yep. Whatever they tell us to, yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
We're going to be taking direction from planning there. There'll be a screen, some kind of a screen there that they're working with us to approve.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, he had another.
I'm sorry.
Well, the part of the, then that is the, in the agreement, we're, sorry, thank you. There's facade, utility easements, but then this is a, provides a public access easement, and then there's a small, thin purple here where it provides a repair easement. So, where this block didn't have circulation before, we've already put the sidewalk in along 7th Street, so now we'll have a seven-and-a-half-foot sidewalk along M and L, and then I believe that 8th Street's a six-and-a-half-foot sidewalk that we'd be putting in as part of all this. Questions about that? Tom Houston was going to do this, but. Moving two primary employers, we'll be able to not only retain the current 48 jobs that we have, but we'll be able to add 92 in that location. So, we're about, those two businesses are about $2.5 million in salaries right now. We'll add another $3 million and.
Salaries?
As we add those jobs. The comp plan asks for energy and greenhouse gas reductions that are quantified in the Cleaner Green or Lincoln Plan. So, we took their greenhouse gas accounting and put it on a square foot per project basis. The industrial square footage in the CBD is looking for a reduction of 754 tons of greenhouse gases. Our project will do about 1,100. Lincoln, the energies reduction is a similar number relative to that. And then we, the block has been put on the register of historic places, and so we're also working with local, state, and federal to make it a historic renovation. I kept it under 15.
Questions?
Jonathan? Regarding the options for.
Jonathan, regarding, uh, the options for saving money on energy, I don't know, Mr. Camp would know more about this. Uh, District Energy Corporation, do you have any discussions about using any of the public facilities?
Yeah, we've been, well, we've been geo, have, we have, uh, like 12 different well fields that are primarily because of District Energy and that work. We have a great local installer base because all the work LPS and DEC has done. We've talked to them numerous times, um, about trying to incorporate, uh, the block. Uh, we still hope that, right now, it's the, the challenge has been in the, in being able to do the capital cost of connecting. We have four buildings over in the historic Hay Market that we hope to possibly connect with, uh, the arena side. And then over on the Dairy House side, whether the arena DEC makes it up or it's the, uh, K Street plant, there's some chance that at some point we'll be able to see if there's a, uh, in the, in the load profile, if there's some synergy there. And with our process energy needs, if the breeze it grows, we'll, you know, the, the geothermal's, uh, is like, is an energy reduction, but we'll need other sources beside that. So we're experimenting with, uh, talking to the Park Service about what we can do with solar. And we're still talking to DEC if they can get the connection down there. We'd be very excited about that in those locations. That, answer your question?
Well, I guess I was kind of interested in whether or not the geothermal in this area is, is the only kind of solution for your needs or if that integration with the DEC network would be something that would be in place of, but you're saying no, you're saying this would go together.
Correct. We're hopeful.
Yeah. Along, yeah, on the District Energy, the Dairy Project is sort of in the middle here. When you look at what we've got up here by the city county building versus down at the, in the West Hay Market, and we're not extended that far. I see Mike Lang in the audience too, who serves with me on that board. And we've been looking at things, but right now it's not there. But at least with the geothermal added to District Energy at some point, that'll make it more feasible.
But we've been drinking the Kool-Aid for a long time. We're believers.
Well, the, excuse me. The other thing then is, is regarding this, the space that is needed for this geothermal system, um, it, it has been our policy for some time now not to vacate streets in the downtown. And that used to be something that was done a lot. We ended up with a hodgepodge of right-of-ways and, and as you know, I mean, we can't always predict what kind of needs we'll have in the future. West Hay Market has been a success beyond what I think any of us thought.
Correct.
It's really, uh, an outstanding thing. And South Hay Market, we can hope for some kind of similar, uh, build out, which of course, uh, that makes those street right-of-ways extra important. Sometimes street right-of-ways that we thought were never going to go anywhere. And so here we are, vacating a couple of major street right-of-ways when we haven't been doing that before. And, and I guess I understand there were complications here about financing and so on that, that maybe were involved here. Could you explain a little more about that, why we couldn't have done just an easement for you underground for your geothermal system while retaining our ownership of the street otherwise?
Our phase one, we did with the, partially with the disaster recovery bonds, and we ran the same issue. And so the city worked with us to rewrite part of that bond policy so we could take title to the buildings. Um, part of what makes this work for us, and we'd run into some fashion if we just did traditional finances, we're doing, uh, a senior loan in SBA 504. And, you know, so both times we've talked to both the SBA and there's two local CDCs, conduits actually loaned the money for SBA. And if they can't take title for collateral, then they can't do those portions. The, that portion of the project's about 1.2 million. So in today's dollars, it changes the cost of capital by about a quarter million dollars, which is just outside the scope of what would make it feasible. We, uh... I know, so we looked at, at street by, I'm sorry, street by street, you know, what is best we could predict with the, with staff. And 8th Street obviously is going to be a, a more important collector than the other two. And so this was, essentially, we're bearing a third of the cost there, which we could get within, uh, within that project, that amount of contingency we could, we could bring into the project. But trying to do all three streets was more than we could do. So I have a lot of spreadsheets if you want to see them.
I'm sure. I, I mean, I'm just concerned because as the staff report points out, the reduction here in the right-of-way is rather significant. Um, and you're basically going up to the street, um, in what you're purchasing.
Well, the, correct. Uh, we didn't need quite to the curb line for the well spacing, but for continuity, uh, we took it, that was the curb line, so we would bear that cost.
But that ends up producing, it says M Street to 53 feet and L Street to 65. Those are pretty narrow right-of-ways for downtown.
We've been down the Hay Market for 25 years. And, uh, we've seen lots of evolutions and been part of lots of solutions. In fact, moving our business from outside the arena down there is, again, us trying to be part of the solution, not, not part of the problem. So if we, when we get to that future, I hope we've demonstrated that we're going to work with the city to do what it takes to make it work for everybody.
What about the sidewalks? The sidewalks would then be on the vacated property. So those would be on your property, but there would be an easement.
Correct.
The public could use those sidewalks. Can you talk about the parking here? Because clearly you're going to use some of this space for parking. How does that impact the ability of pedestrians to get by? It looks, it's those blue things are vehicles I'm thinking.
Well, they're our truck access. If you come down to 729 Q Street, we have the same arrangement. Uh, we've been pulling that off for 20 some years with the public. And, you know, there's some days, you know, we, we pull our trucks in and we're doing material handling between the building and the truck. And it's, I think people generally enjoy seeing the activity. We've, it's never been an issue, even as busy as it is over there in historic Hay Market, that I think we're part of the ambiance. Somebody doesn't yell at you to move your truck every now and then. You're not downtown.
But you would be parking next to your building instead of out in the street in this situation?
Well, there's, uh, I mean...
Isn't that what you're showing here?
When there's trucks there, which are different times of the day, and depending on, uh, you know, some of these trucks up here servicing the grain silos, they can be parked there. You know, this spent grain truck might be there for four days until it's full. And the new grain truck might be there half a day, but it's not, not blocking the sidewalk up here where we're sharing the sidewalk. Um, it wouldn't necessarily be pulling over it. We're, like I said, we've been managing that with the public. It's, it, uh, on Q Street for a long time. Certainly less busy here on these two streets from a pedestrian point of view than over there.
All right. Well, we may come back to this, but I'll see. Any, any other questions?
Well, just, just so I understand the map, is, are the blue rectangles cars and trucks?
Well, the, the, the blue and the orange are trucks. The green is, is, uh, some kind of landscaping.
Okay. So the, on M Street where you have horizontal blue rectangles, they are blocking the sidewalk, but just in, you're saying in a temporary way?
Correct. Yeah. It's just a, I mean, not necessarily blocking the sidewalk, they're pulling up to the sidewalk.
Can then, can you touch on where the sidewalk would be then?
Yeah. Sorry, the architect said he only had so many colors in his car.
Could you maybe just blow it up just a little bit?
So right along here on M Street is a seven and a half foot sidewalk from 7th Street to 8th Street. And I think the trucks are just supposed to be illustrative.
I just want to understand it. So it kind of starts out wider and gets narrower and then I assume it gets wider again. I can't tell.
No, it's, the sidewalk, I'm sorry, it's actually the, it's actually the same width. It's the dashed line that comes down. The yellow area that jogs is, is, uh, the part that's already private property. He's trying to illustrate several things there. This, all along here is both a mix of public and private property. But the, so it'd be a straight seven and a half feet all the way along the, the building line here, all the way up.
Okay.
Can you show how that goes on up to 8th Street?
Let me just back it out a little bit.
Just move your thing, yeah.
Yeah, that, so the, the longer ones are the trucks. If you can scoot it back down, just, I want to understand the smaller, the smaller ones. Is that parking, dedicated parking spaces? Or is that a loading zone as well?
These are all overhead doors. And so, yeah, there would be trucks parked there some of the time.
But not, it's not for public parking? It's?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Anybody like to speak to this item? Staff questions?
Yeah. Um, maybe David Carey and then I might have something for law.
David Carey, City County Planning Department?
Yeah. Well, as I mentioned before, we have had a policy now for some time of not vacating right-of-way. And, and then this comes before us. And I know that there's a lot of background work that's gone on that we haven't seen. Um, but it's, it's tough for me to get a package like this that includes something that is so at odds with what's been our typical procedure. So, um, and I'm a little worried about what precedent this sets. And I guess I'd like you to explain the thought process that went in behind this about these vacations and why, when the next block over somebody asks, we can say, no, really, it's not appropriate to be vacating our, our right-of-way.
Yeah. And that's a really good question. Um, the thinking behind this is, the need is to look at this as a package, um, because we have different things happening here. Uh, I believe it was in 2010, the approval of the redevelopment plan for this block occurred. And so there is an ongoing project there that is the, uh, the intention is to redevelop the block, um, have the employer go to this location to rehab the building and reuse the building, a historic building. And so there are benefits there to the community that are already in motion. Uh, and then when you add into this, the geothermal project piece to this, which in our discussions in getting to this point, that is the, the next level of uniqueness that is brought to this proposal for the right-of-way vacation, um, that, with that additional piece. Uh, and when you look at the rest of the history of the block and how we got to this point with the redevelopment project, that, that is what makes sense, how we get to this point, it makes sense to do the right-of-way vacation. Uh, another part of that is that because this is an existing building with overhead doors and truck traffic, historically as a dairy, as a Dairy House was there and how that was used, and in a similar sense, what will be continuing to be used in that sense, that you have that kind of activity, that more, um, truck traffic activity, that the opportunity to get what would be ideally the, the streetscape that has the planning strip and the on-street parking in that right-of-way area is not really available to us because we're retaining that physical footprint of the building, which we want to see continue to be there. Um, so you put all these together. And so that's how you get to a point of saying that along with the geothermal project aspect of this, that it makes sense to have the right-of-way vacation occur. So in a, in a roundabout way, that's trying to answer your question of why we got to this point. I think as far as establishing a precedent, and I think Rick Pao from Law could, uh, talk to that as well, um, the uniqueness of this is that geothermal project, that that is something that, uh, we as a city want to be supportive of in a sustainability manner. Um, so, you know, those types of projects, if they were to come forward for other locations, um, if that aspect was part of that proposal, we would consider that. Uh, but it would be a case-by-case basis. And there are a lot of reasons for us and why we got to this point on this project.
But it sounded like financing was a big factor there, that in fact, we could have retained the property and provided easements if the financing had worked out for that approach. It's just that, so we still could have had the geothermal, but due to this, these restrictions on the loan, we're kind of in this spot where in order for them to make the loan work, we have to make this transfer of property. I mean, it feels like it's less about the geothermal than it is about these technical financing issues.
I, I think, I think part of the, part of what's going on here is the, um, the financing folks, um, not having done a ton of these types of projects, want to see some, um, some experience with this, some success with it. And I think in the future, hopefully, we have a little, applicants would have more of an, of an ease of getting their financing done. So possibly those types of permanent easements would be more, uh, available to a project in the future. But I think what's happening is the financing field is, feels very conservative at this point and wants to, um, protect itself as much as possible. So that's why that right-of-way actual obtaining of the property was part of that discussion.
Well, the, the South Hay Market plan has come along sort of since this project started.
Correct.
And it has, um, you know, streetscape plans and talks about the, having a 92-foot right-of-way is kind of a minimum to do the streetscape as envisioned there. And, uh, I was trying to remember what the, the street layout was because I knew there was, there were additional streets that were being potentially built as part of the South Hay Market plan. And I didn't have that on my computer. And of course, Councilwoman Gaylor Baird did have it and provided it. So, um, uh, the, the streetscape has the, uh, a new, or I mean, the, the plan, the street plan for West, South Hay Market has a new curved road to the west and then M Street connecting and L Street connecting to that. So, and I just look at this and think, again, you know, here, whatever our vision was when this project started, somewhat is in collision with now our new vision for the South Hay Market. I don't want to see us lose opportunities here to build out our streetscape there in the way we'd like. And I guess, to what extent can we still make parts of that work, given 53 feet of right-of-way?
Right. And I appreciate that comment. And, uh, the 92-foot, um, right-of-way cross-section that we're talking about for the South Hay Market plan is, uh, kind of an example of what you would do within that space if it was available. And we acknowledge in that plan that we don't have that in a lot of different places throughout the South Hay Market. Uh, but that is more of an ideal. If we had all that right-of-way, what would we do? Um, and we just simply don't have that in all, every location. What we would still, what we're still saying with the South Hay Market is that we want to, uh, get as much as possible in the existing right-of-ways throughout that area, that subarea. Um, and along M and L Street, in this case, where the right-of-way vacation is being asked for, we can still accomplish that on what would be the north side of M Street and the south side of L Street as far as the streetscape, where we have a adequate planning strip, on-street parking, and a continuous sidewalk. Uh, the thinking again behind, uh, the block face on the south side of M Street and then, uh, and the north side of L Street along the Dairy House project here, is that that existing condition is more or less going to be, remain because the use is going to be similar. So that truck traffic that we talked about and some of that imagery was available to us would still be there. So the ability to get the, the full streetscape wouldn't be there based on the fact that this redevelopment project is happening the way it is happening. So again, it's a lot of different pieces and parts of the thinking here. But the, the South Hay Market plan is definitely trying to get those streetscapes done. We would want to be very clear that we need to get that on the north side of L and the south, sorry, the south side of L and the north side of M as redevelopments occur in those other blocks, um, to make sure that we have some of those amenities there for the pedestrian, um, because we wouldn't be getting them, although we would have a pedestrian access easement on both sides of this block face with this proposal. So there is that vision of the South Hay Market, um, but we're also acknowledging that we're not going to get the full, perfect world in all of our streetscapes and all of our right-of-ways throughout different pieces and parts of the South Hay Market, simply because there's different, um, aspects and realities that we have to deal with.
Part of the reason we don't have some of the right-of-way might be because of vacations in the past.
And that's a good point. And I, and I acknowledge that. Um, and so we, we want to make the best of what we have in front of us as well as trying to make sure that we're able to accomplish some things in the future as well.
And are you saying that the block north and south, where you're going to have the north streetscape on M Street and the south streetscape on L Street, that those blocks don't have existing buildings functioning in a way that prevents streetscape amenities from happening in the future, unlike this block where...
Yes.
Because of the redevelopment of the historic building... We, we aren't going to have that space, enough space for it?
The, the north side of M Street, the opportunity comes along when that block ultimately redevelops at some point.
Even if they just use the existing building, there isn't a conflict there the way there is on this exist, this block that we're talking about today.
Right. There's not, there's not that continuous building frontage that is, is a significant...
Prohibitive.
It is, is, is a permanent in a sense, and, and it doesn't allow for that opportunity. But we would have to have the redevelopment wave happen on those blocks to have that opportunity to do the streetscape still, but that, that they... to have that opportunity to do the streetscape still, but that, that they would, that opportunity would be there at, at that time.
Okay.
John?
I think what my colleague was just asking, between Seventh and Eighth on M, if I'm not mistaken, Midwest Steel has the right-of-way, so that's going to be a bottleneck that we just need to understand, both north and south sides would not have any opportunity. If you recall correctly, I believe that Midwest Steel got, got ownership of that north side.
You're right, and, and the, the difference, I think what Liren was just saying is that because there isn't a significant structure right along that right-of-way, that the opportunity when redevelopment comes in is to redefine where that right-of-way line is when that comes through, so that we can establish the sidewalk and the street trees and things like that.
But we don't own that.
We don't own that currently.
And so, we'd have to buy it back.
Depending on the, the aspects of a redevelopment agreement, yeah.
Which goes back to Jonathan's point, that it limits options in the future for establishing the kind of reality that's laid out in the plan for the South Haymarket, if in fact we don't own the right-of-way.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's an existing condition, that we don't have, have an opportunity to change that now, we're going to have to deal with that when a redevelopment project comes in for that block. And this case, again, because we have that significant structure that we're agreeing is a good idea to redevelop, redevelop and rehab, that that, and the activity itself on the site, that that opportunity for that streetscape was not really present to us in the first place, for, for what we're talking about today.
Mm-hmm.
I, I really think, assuming this goes forward, that we just really need to understand, between Seventh and Eighth on M Street, that it isn't going to have the opportunity that is desired under the South Haymarket, and that's not bad, I think, but we shouldn't delude ourselves, thinking that somewhere, even though there's not a building face there, we, we sold that right-of-way a couple of years ago.
Sure.
And so, I, I just, I think we need to proceed, understanding that's the condition under which we operate.
Any other questions? Carl?
I'd like Rick Payo.
Before David gets away, there, there is some, there, the truth is, is that the ability to come and, and, and ask for another look at right-aways and those things, or, or how this all lays out, is still going to be with the council at some point anyway. I mean, what, what we'll do today will make a difference, but there's still the ability, at any point, for somebody to come forward and say, hey, I know this is what the comp plan says, but would you consider changing it? So, the issue to me is that, no matter how hard you try to not set a precedent, at the end of the day, somebody can come in and will, undoubtedly, with, this council may not be here, there may not be anybody here at that point, but somebody will, will probably come in and say, well, I got a better idea. The other irony to me is that we're arguing over the aesthetics of what was at Metal Gold's Building, which is ironic, because aesthetics and that Metal Gold Building would never have gone together for years and years and years, so.
Go ahead.
But it's also about predictability, which is important for people who want to come forward and develop, it's important that they have a sense of what the expectations are, so it means...
Predictability and development are two words that don't necessarily always go together. I mean, we can talk about up M Street, and we were one time going to have an overriding arch, and we were going to have, what, you remember when we were going to have the streetscape, and it was going to have the arches out, and, well, it may have been trees, but it was going to be this, John, what's the right word, you know, but, so, and that's, and that's now 600 apartments, or something like that, so, it's, if you get, if you ever figure it out, call me, because I think it just, it's always subject to change. That's why it's a plan, and that's why it's always a living document, and always in motion, right or wrong. You want to talk to who?
I'm sorry, Carl?
Rick Payo.
Rick.
Payo.
Payo, City Law.
Okay, Mr. Payo, so we're, what's proposed here is doing a couple of different things, something different on Eighth Street, which makes, makes sense, given the, the plans for development on, of, of the South Haymarket, but M and, and L Streets are, is a different plan, and actually selling the right-of-way to, to the developer. So, what are, what can we do to undo this if we have to in the future? I mean, if, if, if something, some new thing, the Southwest Haymarket, okay, comes along, and we move the train tracks to Denver, and, you know, so, and, and there's development in that area, and we really, really need to have four-laned L and M Street going through there, what, what legally would our options be if we need to, if we do this, but later need to change something?
Well, ultimately, you, you have the power of domain, that you can condemn right-of-way, so you always have the ability to potentially come back and acquire that right-of-way. You also have to look at the effect that it has been put on the business itself, it's things, so sometimes you're paying for more than just land costs, you sometimes damage the remaining property, which can increase your cost, but, but over time, developments change, somebody, they come and they go, it could be vacant building someday and, and has no value, so you can't look in the future that crystal ball and, and look at everything that, that clearly, but the city hasn't given up permanent rights, even just the location of the building, and then the, the amount of width we have today, we would have limitations. I mean, you're just, you're stuck with the reality of what your situation is, money can buy a lot of change, that's, that's the bottom line.
A lot of money can buy change.
Questions?
Well, certainly, thank you, Rick, for clarifying what I had a hard time doing, that's why you're a lawyer and I'm not. Jonathan? Yeah, no, regarding the, the easements then, I mean, we, that's really what I was trying to say. We do retain certain easements over this space, because we have utilities.
Right.
And we want to retain the sidewalk easement, but they're still limited in, in scope, and I was wondering if it was, would be at all possible to add additional rights to it? I mean, we're basically, we're not selling this land for much money, I, I don't know what the valuation, it's not very much because of the retained easements.
Correct.
But you're saying, if we acquired it back, we might be told we're damaging the business and have to pay more, so it's not just that, we don't know what the land would be valued at at that point, if it's beneficial to the business.
True.
And the more easements we have, the more retained authority we have, the greater our options in the future, if we want to have, make some change, or if we have to reacquire, and I'm just wondering...
Well, I think the easements we've have, granted, I mean, we've retained on the, the vacated right-of-way, if we vacate it, we're going to retain utility easements, conservation easement, and a use restriction within the deed itself. And then we have the maintenance agreement, which was, had a lot of more detail to be involved, so we didn't put it in the deed, we made that as a separate conveyance back from Dairy House back to the city. So, so that document covers M and L Street, and then you got the north side of M and Eighth Street, which we are keeping title to, but we're granting them easements, and we're granting them free geothermal parking and an access. Now, they're non-exclusive, which means they don't have full rights to even, within that easement area, to control other people's being on the property and that type of situation. They don't totally function, particularly the parking rights, to coming back and widening the street, you know, that would be taking an easement away from them, you know, they, you can probably put the street over the geothermal wells, and that's not a problem, you can probably, within the access easement, that's just be able to get to your own space to do your work, so you can, you know, that's not a 100% day-to-day operation, so you can do some things there, but if you tried to take away the parking rights we're granting, well, then you've changed that nature, if you're going to use it to widen the street, you know. I think we're looking at, generically speaking, straight-line type of definitions of the, what the easement areas, but like I said, they're non-exclusive, so the city has some abilities to go in there, so I think we're looking at, even on their drawings, they showed the landscaping that's going to be within the, quote, easement area, but that's part of their requirement that they put that in as part of their parking improvements, so, so we're getting some of that benefit of the streetscape on, particularly on Eighth Street, by the agreements. Could we get a little bit more landscaping in some of the areas, potentially, if you're not in the area where the doors are coming up and going down, that you're not affecting the access and utilizing of that space, but, but the context was, does seem to be a simpler approach, trying to keep defining out little tiny little elements, how do you even mark where they're going to be, we don't know, particularly on the north side of M, that's so long in the future potentially, and where and how it will shake out, you really couldn't define what you might need to, to have left, so we're just trying to utilize the facts we have today, and to allow business to continue to operate in that function.
Well, so you're saying on Eighth Street, even, we have, we're putting significant limitations on the property we're retaining, that we are keeping. On the others, we're selling the property, they're giving these easements to us for a variety of uses, but the list could be greater, or we could have more flex, it's just, this is what you negotiated.
Correct.
Okay, I'm a little worried about just looking at the map there, and maybe, you know, I don't know how it will feel walking down there when this is done, but that sidewalk is up next to the building, I don't know how attractive that will be for pedestrians, I think the other side of the street will be a far bigger deal, a lot of people might feel like they're basically walking on company property, no matter whether it's a, an easement or not.
And I think we looked at that concept a little bit, just on the operation, of where their future use is it going to be, and how they'll access, I think that if they have a, a hall, you know, event space type, so to speak, they'll be coming in off of Seventh, so, do you really have a lot of pedestrian traffic wanting to go down the sidewalk in front of the area that has a lot of commercial vehicles pulling in and pulling out, so, put them on the north side of M, put them, you know, away from, from that utilization, so that it's actually probably safer, and then they are then, the way the walkway is, it may be closer to the building, but, again, you're just trying to function about, around an existing building that everybody feels needs to be redeveloped, and continue the redevelopment that's going on.
Well, no, I, I appreciate that, and we certainly, the geothermal project is great, the overall project is a great project, and, and so, I guess, I understand you've reached agreements already to modify those, we'd need, you know, the concurrence of the, the other party, and I know Tom Houston is not here today, and so, I guess we might continue some discussion, but I understand the difficulty, you've gone through a long process, so, but I still, am still concerned about this, I, I guess, but I think we just need to talk a little more, and, after the meeting here.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next item, please.
That concludes our public hearing, we can move into the voting session.
Let's do.
All right. Item 24 is assessing nuisance abatement costs associated with the cleanup work by the Building and Safety Department on the property generally located at 340 Northwest 19th Street, introduced by Cook.
So moved.
Second by Carl, discussion, color all.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 25 is approving Hollywood Bowl as a Kino satellite site at 920 North 48th Street, introduced by Cook.
So moved.
Second. By Carl, discussion, color all.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 26 is approving the renewal of an interlocal agreement between the city and U and L Office of Online and Distance Education to provide for online portal and program delivery for online food handler and city alcohol seller training programs, introduced by Cook.
So moved.
Second. Second by Carl, discussion, color all.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 27 is approving a transfer of appropriations in the amount of $10,181.36 from General Fund, discretionary funds of Jonathan Cook, to the Parks and Rec Department, CIP Community Action Program, introduced by Cook.
So moved.
Second. Second by Carl, discussion, again, Jonathan, thank you. Color all.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Public hearing ordinances, second reading, and related resolutions are items 28 through 32. I will note on 31 and 32, they will have an action date of May 11th. Item 33, approving the Blue Blood Brewing Company redevelopment agreement between the city and Blue Blood Brewing Company relating to the redevelopment of property located at 3235 South 10th Street for construction of a brewery and taproom, including renovation, restoration, and opening of Robber's Cave, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second. Second by Carl, discussion, color all.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 34 is submitting the fiscal year 1415 CIP to authorize and appropriate $130,000 in TIF funds for the Blue Blood Brewing Company redevelopment project, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
By Carl, discussion, color all.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 35 is authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Blue Blood Brewing Company Robber's Cave project, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second. Second by Carl, discussion, color all.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 36, approving a contract agreement between the city and U.S. Lawns for the annual requirements for mowing at South Street Maintenance Shop for a four-year term, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second. Second by Carl, discussion, color all.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.